We'll call the panel select board meeting to order on Thursday, May first at seven P. M. For the agenda approval, approve the minutes of four seventeen fourteen. Warrants, mail. Transfer station supervisory monthly board meeting, green up day, five three fourteen. Household hazardous waste collection, five ten fourteen. We'll hear more about that when that transfer station supervisory report. Old business, Amy Moore referring to use of tennis courts and town website and a letter to the state about Route seven with a black top. Anything else? Be added by anybody? Yeah, take a motion.
I'll make a motion, accept the agenda.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Who were the minutes of four seventeen fourteen?
Just one correction. The chairman Nelson Brownell was not here.
Oh, yep.
Okay. If you could correct that, other than that, I see no other issues with the minutes. With the correction, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of four seventeen.
Second. I'm a ghost. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, warrants. Payroll ending five oh two fourteen in the amount of five thousand five hundred seventy six dollars and twenty three cents. Payroll report ending four twenty five fourteen in the amount of seven thousand one hundred fifty dollars and eighty four cents. Costs payable report ending five two twenty fourteen in the amount of thirty eight thousand four hundred and thirty dollars and fifty five cents. Thirty four thousand four hundred forty nine was for the sewer bond expense. Which is the largest chunk of that. And accounts payable ending four twenty five fourteen in the amount of twenty three thousand eight hundred and seventy four dollars and seventy seven cents. Of which there's health insurance is a large chunk and the other is the electricity that we pay. And that's what we're having. And the IRS tax, of course, good old government tax. Much pleasure, guys.
Motion to approve.
Second. Any discussion on it? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I have a liquor license renewal application for the Hoppy Valley Organics Inc. Which is seven five five seven Route seven, Pownell Vermont. Hill House. Hillside House, what's your pleasure?
Motion to sign.
Second.
And I have a liquor license renewal application for American Legion Post ninety.
Motion to sign.
Second.
All those in favor of the two?
Aye. You're welcome.
Vermont Agency of Transportation Department motor vehicle unified excess weight permits. One for Michael Tetrow. And one for Vermont Renewable Fields. Both have been looked at and signed off by our road foreman, what's your pleasure?
Motion to sign.
Second. Any discussion on it? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Yeah, I think that went with that. Okay, Bennyton County Regional Commission is having their annual meeting on Thursday, May fifteenth, twenty four at five thirty P. M. At the end at Willow Pond. This is the one where we'll have a person talking who's a nationally acclaimed planner about planning the towns and how to design and plan one and put it in your town plan. I'm planning to attend this, Linda, you're planning also. And this is the fifteenth, it's a Thursday night. So I will not be here, if any other boards members wishing to attend this?
I will not be here also.
I would recommend, with the town plan being the big issue that a lot of talk is going on about, the more we know about it, the better. So if any other members wish to attend, they probably should. Certainly you get to meet the B. C. R. C. Members, there's a new director that's been there for a while now, but the cover for Rex, which is the one we worked with years ago. Jim, who's been there a while working, but he's very good and very knowledgeable.
We're not gonna have a quorum anyway, so we should cancel the meeting, that's all, for the fifteenth.
Is that a motion?
That's a motion.
Second?
Second, yeah.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
And if any of you else want to go, make sure you tell Linda, because we need to inform them, R. S. A. P. D., to let them know that we're coming, because they had meals and stuff that night as well. Just so they can prepare and not be surprised.
I got a question. When are we voting? For the new member?
May sixth.
Next sixth.
May sixth.
May sixth, okay. Is that Tuesday?
Yep.
Okay. Whoever gets elected?
Should go.
They should go.
Or they should be at least
Or notify them, or can we be for sure that's done?
Yes.
Okay. Very good.
Well, ask our administrative assistant to inform that person, whoever it may be. Could be a write-in candidate, we don't
I have no idea, but anyways, I just, you know, if it's that important, well, we might, okay, and since we're gonna cancel the meeting.
Which we've done.
Said we've had, you know, right along, we wanted another board member, we'd better
Yeah, and it's actually, I'm glad you brought that up, because we need to remind people that, you know, May sixth, which is next Tuesday, they'll be voting and we're gonna vote at the firehouse. So people and hours will be seven to seven like normal? So you got seven A. M. To seven P. M. Next Tuesday, May sixth, hope to see people go to the polls. Thanks, and thanks again, Amy.
Yeah.
That's a good, good point to make. Okay. Next thing, I have a spring planning zoning forum Wednesday, June fourth, up in Lake Murray. Anyone that wishes to go to that, someone in the planning board might go to that. Then we have a Vermont Tobacco Evaluation Review Board, this is a letter that they've sent that they wish to talk to people in the state that are local opinion leaders for surveying and evaluating Vermont's comprehensive tobacco control program. I have been called on this, but I was not aware of what it was about, I've got a voicemail left on my phone, I can call them back and see what they want, they must have a question or type thing they asked. If they do, if the board doesn't mind, I'll give an opinion on tobacco use in town.
Even me.
We have
We should address it, because I really
Yeah, well, I'll, you know, I'm not an expert on our town, but there's people that smoke, there's people that chew, and there's people that don't, and that's the way I'll answer it.
Yep.
Okay. I'll come back to a point there. We have a response from the person that the board voted on a while ago to do with a mobile home that was going to be taken through delinquent tax collection. And the person has decided, based on this, not to wish to make any agreement with the town of Pownell. So
That isn't really the way I read it.
Says Friday, four twenty
I read it, she don't wanna, she don't wanna pay
Allen spoke with Amire and Meyer does not wish to make any agreement with the town of Pownell.
Oh, what's the next sticky note say?
Follow Amire, follow up on Amire mobile home.
Yeah, the next sticker down, isn't there another sticky note there?
No, this was written from the last time when we talked about it.
I thought on that, she was willing to start at some number or something.
Well, that's what she said last, that was
Oh, now she don't wanna, okay, good enough.
That was our discussion last time, was this, what's in red. We just got an update that she doesn't wanna, so, does that mean we're gonna own this?
We're gonna own that thing, so
We took
Come October, you will own it.
Warm up an excavator.
Better get it out of there.
Get a box, put it in it.
Either had to talk to the park owner and see if they want it.
Where is it? On a Berdick's trailer park.
All right, just, the board needs
Probably need a crane to get it. You know, you never know, right?
The board, we should at least take, I haven't seen it.
We gotta see if there's any interest in the thing.
Yeah.
That's right. Anybody.
We need, does it say what year even? She owned it from two thousand and seven, but does it say what it is? The reason why I say that is this is what we do is
Is there a reason? Do you know anything about, anybody know anything about this, why she didn't want it?
Here we go, it's a fourteen by seventy nineteen eighty-two Skyline Ellison mobile home. It's basically what it is, I don't know what shape it's in, because I haven't seen it, gone to look at it, don't know which one it is or where it is, I've been down there, but I didn't take a look at the, this. We should let anyone know out there, I guess, well, we don't own it yet, so we can't, so we can't sell it, we can't do anything till October. Well, we can ask if there's interest, if somebody's interest, please let us know, because by October
I would mention a figure, because the town can't make money on this.
Oh, can't, but how much is owed total here, it's hard for me to
Well, how much, what was the deal here? I kinda forgot it. Well, what happened is the taxes were for a long period of time, and then she was willing to, she agreed to pay from the time she was there, and apparently she backed up from that. But we had a starting figure there of around thirty-five hundred or something.
Yeah, it's three thousand six hundred and sixty-four dollars and twenty-seven cents.
Yeah, that's all.
So that's, that's what we were looking for.
Also probably should, maybe we should ask Berdick if he has any interest in that thing, if it comes empty.
Yeah.
He owns a park, maybe he wants to, you know, maybe he has some interest in it or something.
I, I'm fine, you wanna talk to him?
I can talk to Harvey and ask him if he has any interest.
Yeah, see, see what, you know
When the time comes, and we can't do nothing yet.
Can't do anything until October, late October, is it, when's the actual?
I don't know the exact date, but I just know it's October.
Okay.
Just seems funny that, you know, she seemed to be all gung ho and was very, very interested, it's too bad it fell through, you know.
Yep. Okay, thanks, okay. The other thing is, we have a letter requesting this, I'm gonna summarize this, requesting that the select board basically address the questions that have been brought up, questions about our executive assistant and other, actually other board members, I think were, were How's a nice way to say this, versus harm way? Now, now that the new select board has been assembled for a few weeks, I firmly believe a deserved public apology is in order to the executive assistant of your board. The reason concerns the alleged embezzlement and fraud investigations lies against her by two individuals of the twenty thirteen Town Audit Board, Auditing Board. The substantiated allegations with pursuit of a criminal wrongdoing case may not have proven successful for them, but the experience has left an indelible mark on an innocent town servant. An apology will not erase the embarrassment, pain enduring many months of disparagement she has lived through while standing tall and serving the people, it will not erase a suspicion not committed investigative report which need not have resulted in the first place and remains on record. However, it will be reassuring for her to know that our town appreciates her explanatory, yeah, if I can say it. Services and regrets the unprecedented action of those two people of another town board. The select board addressing this issue and taking appropriate steps, because it's sure a similar major incident does not repeat itself for any town official or employee in the future. I respectfully request this letter be part of the meeting record. Okay, and that's, but, you know, the things I would add to that is, I think some board members that are right here now were accused as well. And a large number of other people in the town, in different ways, that I don't think any of it was ever proven. There's never been a court case, there's never been anything, all's been this, this slander that has been out there. You know, the person I would like to see apology from is the person that initiated such a thing. But, you know, if the board wishes to, I don't know how we would
Well, listen, number one, number one, I don't know the complete facts, okay, on this issue. But with that said, I, this, our panel's board of selectmen, which we were, I wasn't there, never done any accusing, as far as I know, did they?
No.
No.
Did they? No, no, okay, so I'm not so sure anybody did any accusing as far as embezzlement went. There was, the way I understood it, which it never really got thoroughly washed out, as far as I was concerned, but the way I understood it, it was, there was a lot of figures that didn't add up. It wasn't, they didn't say that, the other board didn't say that there was any willful wrongdoing, but it wasn't correct, that's the way I understood it.
Well, there was a state police investigation, and they found no wrongdoing, I mean, so obviously they, they brought it to the state police without our
Yeah, I guess, so I'm not sure, you know, I mean
Well, again
I, I'm gonna say this, number one, you know, you know, I don't think it ever should have gotten that far.
It shouldn't have.
Okay, but, the board, I don't believe that a board of selectmen put it there. Or it didn't have nothing to do with this, with a board of selectmen. It was a very, very bad
Situation.
Situation, or, okay, I'm not good at spelling it out. But I do know that the ones, the ones that made that accusation, in my personal opinion, my personal opinion, should be the ones to apologize and take the blunt for it, simple. To that report, I mean, and if they wanna take it further or don't wanna buy it, that's up to them.
Now, I was on the board in the beginning of some of this, and basically what we found was some very simple data entry type errors, and they were corrected. Quickly, once the persons were told about them, they corrected them. There was no major crime or offense that occurred in any way, I agree with Ronnie, what there was, was some concerns about some documents that they didn't feel were done properly, whether they were payroll or whatever they were, and some of that, I think, was in their error, and the other stuff, I think, was corrected, that I'm aware of. You know, and it was minor stuff, it was like decimal point or some, it's typical type pool errors, it's nothing that anybody did on purpose, or anybody should be blamed for a major crime. That's my opinion.
A little bit that I know about that situation was this, that there was some some areas that were talking about money, okay, that was the claim was that we had, we, there was money missing.
There was money misappropriated that should be returned to the town. That's pretty much
Right.
Well, what does that mean?
Which basically
That was someone else's opinion, that was their opinion.
That's right, and that's
That was their opinion.
It's
Now, that's no different if it's our books, my books, your books, your household, whatever, however you wanna put this.
Like I said
That is one way of doing, and someone else had another way
In case we should go back to the town charter and check the books from there, because I'm sure you'll find discrepancies all the way up through, so
But, 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 when you, when you go through this, when you go through this, there was, there was some people, I believe, that was accused of some wrongdoing, or, or whatever, it's wrongdoing, whether, whether you didn't put the decimal point in the right spot, someone said you did it wrong.
That's right. That's right.
Okay, now, but that ragged on and ragged on.
Which never should have.
Would never should have happened. It should have been an understanding board like we have here now. Okay, so, I mean Another board has a problem, we bring them in and talk to I agree.
And solve the issue.
That's right.
Yeah.
But to answer that letter, I'm not sure, I
I don't think we have to answer the letter, I think, I think the letter is read, it's part of the record.
I just wanna make that statement, that I think it was, it was
And I think everybody knows how we feel about this at this time, and we certainly have all the faith and confidence in our executive administrator.
I think we'd let her know that.
Yeah.
You know what I mean, come on, that's why we're, we're supposed to be the bosses, if we don't have confidence in somebody, you know, that's
And hopefully that's what are under the bridge, and we can move on from this.
Yeah, and I think that's the best way
You may as well, second.
Moving on.
Move on.
We're moving on, okay, okay, that's the mail, that's the mail. Transfer station.
Keep up the good work, Linda.
Yes.
You can.
They can't hear me. Uh, I'm not gonna take a lot of time, I wanna, I wanna emphasize, it was in the paper today, and the word's out there, it's green up day this weekend. And certainly would appreciate anybody that wants to get involved and help clean up the town and whatnot. If they got any questions, they can try to contact me over the transfer station, or possibly somebody here, if they're looking for some help of some sort. Other than that, we've got household hazardous waste day coming up the following Saturday, which is the tenth.
On the green, before you move on. The board made a motion that if there was large objects, to make sure that they got up near the edge of the road, so that the road crew, or whoever, we basically said the road crew, because there was two people in a large truck, could go around and pick those objects up, if people weren't able to bring them in, if they were picking up stuff, make sure that it's piled in a pile where they can get at it. Don't, don't call them and say it's down over the bank over here, because they're not gonna be able to go get that.
Has the road foreman been informed of this?
Hasn't, we'll ask our administrative assistant to let them, let them know, I know that
Well, it would, well
I mean, I don't, I certainly don't wanna string this, I mean, here it is, May first already, second.
I wanna speak on it, I can recall that very clearly, we left that very clear, that we said the road crew, or the road foreman
I know what we said, but
Well, no, wait, no, and, and if there was a problem with that, it was up to him to get back to us.
Okay, I just wanna make sure he's
That was the statement.
A little aware of the responsibilities ahead.
That's right, because we didn't really know, but I, we moved on.
Yeah, and, and we weren't, we weren't expecting a large amount of this.
When you least expect it.
If somebody cleaned up their house or the garage and leave it on a curb.
And I mean, the road crew was picked up materials
Before.
Before, during the year and whatnot, so, yeah. Okay, once again, Saturday, May tenth, is, it's free household hazardous waste collection day, unfortunately, you do have to go to the Shastberry facility, and that is to help contain costs, because this event can be quite pricey.
Where's that located, for those that may not know?
It is on five thirty-six North Road, if you go up to Shastberry and make a right-hand turn by the state police barracks, just beyond, it used to be Dale, it's just Peckham's now, I believe. It's, I think approximately a mile out there, and you're, you'll, when you get there, you're gonna see railroad crossing, and right on your left would be Soon as you hit the railroad crossing, right? North Road, and it's just a short ways up North Road on your left.
Thank you.
There's a couple things I'd like to emphasize, and one of them is the paint, because there's no paint law and whatnot, because in the past, everybody was, encouraged people, if they had latex paint, to attempt to dry it up with kitty litter or whatever, and throw it in the trash. Now we have a new paint law that's going into effect this year, so we've gotta reverse that habit if we can.
Dry it up now.
No, we want you to bring, you can bring latex paint, which we haven't taken a long time to this event, and there will be places that you can take it during the year locally, on a regular basis. The other thing I'd like to emphasize is, if you've got any paints where the label is sketchy or missing, because during a regular collection during the year, these, these places won't take that, because they can't verify that it is, it's paint. So if you can bring it during this, this event, there's people there that we can deal with it regardless. The other thing that I'd like to emphasize is, this is for residents, and you do not have to have a transfer station permit. We did that for quite some time, but now, if you're a Pownell resident, you don't need to have a transfer station permit in order to participate in this event. It will be from nine to one, I will have this posted around town, putting it in all the stores in town. Usually Bill Botso will send this out graciously, does it for us in his email, I will get that to him, so people will know. So, I guess that's it, unless there's something else that you would like answered or emphasized?
Briefly, let's just talk about the tobacco, there was not one bought at auction.
Correct.
Is this something that we're gonna pursue, when is the next auction, have you got anything else in mind?
Yes. I can look at other auctions, private sales, yes, it's something that I plan to pursue.
Yeah, we should, just so the people out there know that we sent the people to the auction. We should report on what we found out about at the auction, whether there was anything that was even worth going to the auction, first of all, whether we bought it or didn't buy it, and then the second thing, you know, again, I think what we need to do is, is decide if there was something there, was our pricing in the right ballpark, or was it not, and then what our next step should be. So, I guess that's
Basically, yes, they had some equipment there with very low hours, it was in really good shape, and we were priced out of it by, not a whole lot, but enough so that we didn't weren't able to make the purchase.
What was our ceiling?
Forty.
And what were we off by?
About five, five thousand.
So we were close, we were close.
Well, you're right, Henry, you're
But we were close.
Theoretically, we were close.
Yes.
We don't know, maybe the person would have kept going. You could have been off by ten, I mean, really, you know what I'm saying. But they were real nice machines. Yeah, that's, that's the key, right there, you know.
Were the good machines at auctions, and it sounds like
They were very, very nice machines. I guess, I guess the only question I would ask, before I even talked about money, would be what you saw sold. Is that the type of machine that you really, that we wanna focus towards? This real low hours, you know, like sixteen hundred, two thousand hour machine, or a thousand hour machine, or I'm not, we're talking about age now, I'm talking about youth. Right, well, you got two, two issues, the one is that, in my opinion, if the machine is in good shape and low hours, it's obviously fairly important, you may have a newer machine with a few more hours on it, that may meet, meet your Same thing. Right. I mean, they did have a two thousand and seven, was that a Cat, or was it?
It was a Case.
Case. But it wasn't an extender, and that had
Oh, okay.
Allen had like seven thousand hours on it, but it wasn't an extender, so
And to be clear, so people understand, we basically need the extender hole, so we can reach into the things and pack them properly, and you're looking for something that has a different type arm on it, that's more curved, so it doesn't get as close to the ceiling, so there's some things that they're looking at physically with the machine, not just the hours and the other.
That's, the advantage of doing it, the way we're doing it, is we don't have to, we're not squeezed into a small timeline, so we got some time.
When is the next auction?
Actually, Saturday, but there's, there's not, not
Nothing in there.
Not that we would be interested in.
All right, well, just keep us posted and, you know.
One good thing is, it isn't that we need it tomorrow. Right. So, I mean, you can, I mean, you're not under pressure, I mean, you know what I'm saying, so, you can do some, certainly do some shopping for us. Yep.
Yeah. Yeah, how, well, yeah, and, and I guess, what, the way I'd look at this, if you see something in an auction, don't, don't wait until your day that you come in and meet with us, if, if that's gonna make it so it's late that you can't go. I'd rather have the board, him come into the board and estimate what he needs, so we can tell him.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, that's right, that's right, if you're, if, if you're gonna go a long ways, and that, you don't think that what we approved is where we should be, then I guess you gotta speak up and we'll talk about it.
Sure. You know.
That make sense, Rod, I mean, right, I mean, you know.
Should we talk about it now, or should we wait until you, uh, see what's out there? Because it, it could be cheaper if it's something else altogether, different than what they saw.
I don't, I don't have any reason with keeping you up to date and informed, I, you know, it's, so if something comes up, I have no problem coming back.
Sure.
So, if there's any concerns.
I think we're all open-minded to that part, so I, you know.
Yeah, that's a plus, good.
Thanks, Hat.
Okay.
Thanks. Okay, moving on, Amy Moore, use of tennis courts.
Hello?
Hi.
Should I take a seat?
Sure, come on up here, sit right up here.
Give you the mic back and.
So, I sent you all a letter last week. I'm assuming that's why you asked me to come by.
They asked you to come by.
Yes. Oh, there we go.
We asked you, uh, come by, I was acting Chad that night.
Got it.
Um, just to, number one, um, state your intentions, uh, so that everybody watching knows.
Sure.
Exactly what, uh, you're looking for.
Well, my friend Lisa Goldberg, who now lives here in panel too, she moved up here from New Jersey, and we have both been playing roller derby all over the country, and actually the world now, been playing in Europe some, um, and we're really tired of commuting to Keene to play derby, so we started a league here in Bennington County, and we started at the end of February, we have a little over twenty people coming now, and they're all women so far, but, uh, and right now, we're also still only adults, but, um, so we have twenty women between the ages of twenty and sixty on roller skates, and we have, are renting a space at the mill on Benmont Avenue, but the space is a little smaller than our ultimate competition space would be. So, now that the weather's getting nicer, we've been looking for a place that we could skate outdoors sometimes, that would fit our competition space, and the tennis courts down here were one of the spaces that we looked at, because the surface is smooth enough, and there aren't any obstacles that we could set up our track, which is fifty, seventy-three feet by hundred and eight feet, and, um, we were hoping the town might let us skate there. That was our first request, is that, actually, we're thinking Tuesdays, so if you said yes, you'd see us there when you came to your meetings. Um, 'cause right now, we practiced, I'm sorry, Thursdays and Sundays, so, we're looking for a couple hours a week to, just to be able to skate on the surface. And we came down and skated, and we did some falls and stuff, and it didn't seem to affect the surface at all.
Kind of, uh, material are your skates?
No, our wheels are urethane, we could go get a skate if somebody, if you really wanna see them, um, and then we also have other equipment that would be on the ground, we have toe stops, they're usually made out of some kind of urethane or rubber. Um, those could leave marks sometimes, some people have clear ones that are like, um, rubber eraser, some people have black ones. We also wear, um, knee pads and elbow pads and wrist guards, that all have plastic on them, and they're usually, they're black or white plastic, and so sometimes those can leave little bits of marks, most everything goes away in the rain, so.
So, you're basically looking for a hard surface, is that what you're looking for?
A hard, smooth surface.
You're not bringing a rink and setting it up and then practicing, you basically want a hard surface, just.
Yeah, we wanna, for now, we'd like to just come with a rope and a piece of chalk and mark out where we're going to skate and just skate there, we'd probably, actually, if we used that exclusively, we would probably bring some shovels down, work on cleaning the dirt and the growth out of the cracks, so that we could help save it for the future, 'cause right now, it's at that point where a little more neglect, and it's gonna be less and less usable by anybody, um, but right now, the ha, the northern half is skateable, the southern half has some spots, and you know, we might be interested in doing some fixing, so we could have some more use of it, but for now, we'd like to just clean it up and skate there.
Yeah, the, the other, the, I thought at first when I saw tennis courts, you were talking tennis, and I was gonna inform you that the school was looking for somebody to help them fix their tennis courts.
Ah, well, that's the other thing, is the school does have tennis courts, so it's almost redundant with how close they are.
So, but basically, uh, you know, it, it's a, they have a, basically, a huge fenced-in area, is what they have.
Yes.
Uh, and, uh, that, again, I just brought it up, because I thought it was tennis courts, and basically, I know the school said that, uh, they were hoping the town at some point might be able to do something with them to share the cost, to fix those sort of things up, so that people in the town can use them, the basketball courts and the tennis courts that are there. It's just at this point, we're not there, and I forgot about this, but Cindy probably asked me that two months ago, so. But, but it's something that we, we as a town should look at, and I don't know what that, again, when you use them and don't use them, whether that area would be something, because if you're doing the school day, you, there's no way or any of that.
Well, the, the tennis courts at the school are nice, and the fence is important for, for tennis, because when you're playing tennis, nobody wants to be going running, chasing their balls along the place.
Fence, you have the net, netting tanks, which here you won't, won't have.
Netting, yeah. There's no nets there.
Which makes it better for what you're doing.
Exactly, yeah.
Now, you, you know, there's no bathroom facilities available to you, or anything like that, um, you know, water, anything like that is not available down there.
Yes, we're aware of that, um, we looked at a number of facilities, and the only place in Bennington County we found that would even have bathroom facilities was the rec center, and pretty much flat out said that we weren't allowed to skate there. So, we were allowed to skate at the Stark Street, so, last Thursday, last Thursday, we came down, we skated he, here, we just decided to skate here, and skate at the other place on Stark Street Playground, and we skated here for about a half hour, and then we went to Stark Street, and everyone says, oh, we don't wanna skate here, we wanna skate in panel, because they, it's just that, it's a academy more than.
I'd like to hear more about that school business, I mean, I don't know how to answer that, to this thing.
Well, I think that.
Well, we can get insurance for the town.
I'll, I'll come to town. Yeah, that's what I was gonna say, it, what we'll do is, uh, we'll, we'll talk about the school again in a minute, but let's, we can finish this thing. Uh, that's what I'm gonna ask, what's our liability, you have your own insurance?
Yeah, we are affiliated with the Women's Flat Track Derby Association for our insurance, this is a copy of the policy we have with, um, the Vermont Mills Properties, shows that we have a general aggregate of five million, um, per league is two million, I don't, I'm not an insurance person, so I don't know what all these numbers mean, which is why brought a copy for you, so, and we, we, we can list you either as a certificate holder, or as an additional assur, insured, you'd have to let me know how you want to be listed, but we can get you a certificate of insurance.
Yeah, we'd have to ask our insurance company how we need to be listed to be protected. If you could do that, Linda, because really what we're looking for is the protection of the town.
Mm-hmm.
And, and he'll know much better than me, maybe somebody here knows, but I don't know.
And we're talking about adults here.
Yes, yeah, in the future, we might like to, uh, incorporate a, a youth league, there's been an amount of interest, but our current indoor space is not ready for youth, and our, our skaters aren't ready, so if we did that, we'd come back to you.
How many people come to watch?
An event, or, or practice?
Practice, this is practice.
Our practices are closed, we realize that if we practice here, we can't stop people from prat, watching us, because it's a public space, and there's people driving down Route Seven, it will probably attract some attention, um.
Yeah, but are we, we're not talking a hundred people, we're talking very few, I would assume.
Well, we'll have twenty people at practice, but I don't think a hundred people would come watch.
Yeah, the reason why I say that is parking and other things get involved when you start having larger crowds, and if it, and if all it's used for is praxis, not events.
Right.
Then I don't think we'd see.
It's not really in condition for them.
And that also depends on the weather, if it's.
Yeah, it's, it's a nice thing about having our own dedicated practice space in town, if the weather's bad, we're just gonna stay at three o'clock in the afternoon, and practice is in Bennington.
And what hours, uh, are you talking about the use of this?
Daylight, I, uh, we can go a little later as we go into the summer, but sometime between six and nine-ish. We usually do a two-hour practice, so after dinner, but before dark, 'cause we can't skate safely when it's dusk.
Yeah.
Uh, I think, uh, it's up to the board, but I think if our insurance company says that we're covered and so forth, it's probably, you know, how many of these people are from panel that are, are in this league?
I think we are the only ones technically from panel.
Two right now, which might attract more.
Everyone's from Bennington County, we have people from Reedsboro and Stratton and, and Dorset, and we were trying to find something local, that generally would've rather been in Bennington, 'cause it's the central place for everybody, but this particular surface is much nicer for skating.
Well, what I'm.
Do we have to address the, uh, park, and, you know, with twenty cars coming here, do we have to worry about?
Wouldn't be twen, most people can carpool, actually, maybe we'll have six or seven cars.
Okay, all right, I just wanna be sure that the neighbors don't come.
Yeah, you know, that's, that's, uh.
Well, if we have to park up here and walk down, we can do that too.
That's fine, okay, I just wanna be sure that we.
Well, the parking, I think there's.
I don't wanna do something, um.
Well, church services are on Sunday, during the day, uh, you know, they're here during the day, but at night, there's meetings here lots of times that will fill up our parking areas, but that's usually dark, I would assume, well, seven o'clock, right? So, it could be seven, six, seven o'clock is when we usually meet, not just us, but the other boards. So, you're looking at that space being utilized, but again, there's a, a pretty large spot with the old building you used to have for the parking. Then there's this old road, now, it's a little walk to get there from there, but I think that's probably appropriate, because you're off the roadway.
Well, I would just ask that you be mindful of the neighbors, you know, um, they're the people that live here, and, you know, uh, right next to this, just be mindful of that.
I understand.
Um, respect the property, you know, if you bring it in, take it out.
Absolutely.
Um, and if you're gonna do anything to the tennis courts, uh, uh, this is just a suggestion, I don't know anything about that, okay? Uh, I'm gonna be very honest, I couldn't tell you what the surface is, but perhaps the road foreman would know, and if you do have anything that you would like to do, I, just maybe a simple request to say, is it okay if we do this, or is it okay if we use?
Right.
This on that, you know?
A second request in my letter was, could we paint lines, and I, at this point in time, we don't want to paint lines, but it sounds like it's not excluded.
Yeah, I, I, yeah, I guess that the way I would look at it, and if the board was to approve it, it'd be approving it underneath a, a temporary.
Temporary rule, yeah.
We, we.
See if it works for you, see if it works for us.
You know, eh, eh, you know, every three or four months, because summer months are about three months. So, so we would review it every three months or so, but that's the way I would suggest, uh, once we find out what the insurance is, suggest that if the board does go that way, that, that there's a review process, that way, if we hear from the neighbors, or if something occurs, we can deal with it. Uh, it's not something that's locked.
Absolutely, I live on Barbara Pond, I totally understand about, you know, people using things and generally.
So, it's.
My, my, I'll tell you, my, the only concern, I, the only concern I've got is, is to be, to let the neighbors here know what's, uh, the change perhaps might be.
And if we could get some direction as to where appropriate parking is, 'cause it's not particularly clear.
And if anyone has any kind of, uh, you know, um, problem with, with what we're trying to do here, I'd like to have them come forward and uh, let us know what we, they don't like and like, and so on, okay? Does that make sense?
Yep.
Okay.
So, we'll contact our insurance company.
Yeah, tell you from there.
Get an answer from there, and then at that point, we can make a decision.
And we have a copy of your insurance?
I have a copy of what I, we have with, um, Vermont Mills Property, but it's, it's who it's through, so we can, you know, can be based on that.
Okay. The only thing I'd like to say before you leave is, uh, there's a dirt road that goes out on Route Seven.
Yes.
You should not go out that road.
Okay.
Right.
That's a, that's a no, you can park on that road, but don't go out on seven.
Don't enter Route Seven from there.
Yes, you have to come back this way.
It's, it's kinda dangerous.
Cause that's a bad spot.
It's a blind, but there's two roads, there's that road, and then there's the road that goes along the churches, I think you got ample parking for.
Oh, that's plenty enough for a half a dozen or a dozen cars.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think that'll be the issue.
Well, that's good, I'm, I'm glad something's happening, I mean, I don't have a problem with it.
Yeah, it's, yeah, well, the people at town have been asking for a long time for recreational type things, you know, and, and I think this here, you might attract some younger people, it gives us some recre, recreation for the town that's different than what we've had, and make it available, and so, you know, that's where I come from, I think it's the right thing to do, and we should be looking at other recreational resources too, okay, but.
It might be on the next order of business too.
Okay, pull the chair back, and we'll talk with you, I'm gonna talk, I'm gonna talk about the school first. Uh, basically, what, uh, what's requested of me was to bring up to the, the select board the issue on the, the tennis courts, basketball court, the things that are fenced in over there that needs some repair, uh, and see what the town would think about sharing some of that cost with the school, if it was to be fixed up, so that people could, not only the school students would use it, but other people could use it, just like they use the school after hours and so forth for recreation. Uh, so I'll leave that, you know, we, we can find out what that means and costs, I'm sure they can, and then tell us if the board is interested at all.
Well, I, I'm, if, um, I'm not gonna speak for, as a selectman for board, I, I wanna, I would like to, if there's people that, um, in the community, that feel that there's a need for that use, uh, I need, we need to hear from them.
Yeah.
I mean, um, to fix it up, I mean, I mean, what we just said didn't.
Well, you heard.
Was no one coming, you, you, I, I need to hear that people are using it.
Just like these folks did.
That's right, right, you're correct.
Yeah, yeah.
I just need to hear from someone, that it's a need, okay?
You heard, you heard there was a need from the school board, so now, what you're looking for is individuals that use it.
What I heard from the school board was there was a need for help.
That's right.
I didn't hear that, from the school board, am I saying that correctly?
The school board, the children will use it, just so you know, somebody uses it.
Oh, I know, I understand, but.
Okay, so when you ask who use it, what you're asking for is, who will be using it besides the school?
Besides, that's right, that's right.
And that's, and that's a fair question, but be aware that someone will use it.
Oh, I, well, they're using it now, aren't they?
Some of it, yeah, but they're having trouble.
No, I meant, I meant children, I mean, the school used it.
See, I, I'd like to see something in writing that says, who will be able to use that stuff.
Okay.
Yeah, oh, yeah, I, I.
Because I know that times before, people have asked to use the facilities, and the schools said, oh, no, you can't use that. Well, I, I mean, maybe things have changed, I, I don't follow this stuff.
They've used the basketball courts and the other stuff, but.
But I mean, it would be nice to, you know, so that we know, 'cause if we're gonna be more committed, 'cause we're pretty committed already to the school.
Big time.
We pay big taxes, so.
Big time.
I mean, and as far as if we're gonna be even more committed, if more people are gonna, or have a chance to use the facilities and stuff that aren't in school, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
Then I, and if we've, you know, they feel it's, it's something we ought to do, well, fine.
That's good.
Okay, so we'll move on that.
Well, and the people have heard, and I'll ask her, and I'll ask her who's coming to the school to ask, because there has been some people that ask about tennis courts.
Right, but, okay, now, next thing, town website.
Okay.
Amy Moore.
Here we go, yeah, many, it was mentioned that many years ago, I put together a proposal for a website for the town, but many years ago was many years ago. So, um, I had a lot of questions about what the select board wants with a website.
Well, eh, eh, I think what the consensus is, is when you go to look up our town of panel on the web, um, there's very little information out there.
Yes.
Um, as a matter of fact, that, uh, according to one of our, uh, citizens here, that the domain name is no longer even in use. So, I guess what we're looking for is to reinvent the wheel. Okay, the wheel being our first website that has.
You had a website?
Uh, yeah, it was panel.org, I believe.
A person, a person put up a website that was called panel.
I'm not aware of the town has never owned a website.
We of the town of panel have not owned a website.
Okay, I think that's an important point to clarify there, so since nineteen ninety-nine, I built bennington.com.org dot, there are a lot of domain names that point to that, and I, um, built all of the town's systems, including putting the database for all of the tax listings through the web, uh, a system which would be really antiquated today to get the town meeting minutes on the web, um, but I know as a citizen of panel, I would just like to be able to go online and look up when the dump's open.
Yeah.
You know, some, some of the basic information that's just, and I don't trust all of the individual.
Planning board meets, when the selectmen meet, when.
Absolutely.
You know, all our different, uh.
Copy of all of our permits that people have to get.
Yes.
Things like that, um, I, I don't think we're looking for something that is day-to-day, more or less just saying maybe month to month is, 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 uh, and anybody like the panel historical, historical society just did the art presentation down at the Solomon Ri, Library, something like that could be put on it. Firemen, uh, doing a fundraiser, the Legion, like, you know.
Oh, there's all sorts of things that could go on there, and then it's a matter of who is going to do that work, or like, is the, so, are the selectmen themselves, or your assistant willing, willing or able to do some maintenance work of posting things, does, does, does the site need to be built in a way that the common person can update things, and I, I think that it should be that way, I, I don't think you wanna hire somebody to do all of the stuff.
No, it, basically, the, the way I see a website for the town of panel is that there's a section that basically has the everyday needs that people are looking for. That basically has the everyday needs that people are looking for. You talked about tax listings, uh, things like that. Uh, uh, things that people come and.
Special election we have coming up.
You know, but ba- basically what you're looking, well, that's an announcement. Basically, what I'm looking for is day to day things that you use.
Static stuff.
Permits of every type that we, we have out there that people should be able to find and get online. They, they shouldn't have to come here, then they can come and have it filled out and be ready. Uh, the tax maps, people look, and I don't know if we can get a tax map up online, but it's perfect to do.
Yeah, that's definitely something to work with the B C R C and in fact, when you, when you see Jim at the meeting, I know they have a lot of the G I S information.
They have our tax map.
And I know they have ways to integrate that with websites, so.
Okay, but they, they base, so basically they have that information already, so we could do that. The same with our zoning, uh, what zones are where. That's information that people, not only in town want, but people who are building or coming here to build or do things. That's, that's an informational type page that doesn't change a whole lot.
Absolutely.
Okay, then you've got a, another section that does change all the time. You know, that uh, is minutes and meetings, schedules and so forth that we, we put together. Then I think you have another announcement section that the public gets to, whether it's the firemen or whoever that makes their announcements. But that's where they go and what they do. So, so you have basically three different sections of a good webpage that you're providing information on. That the other is information that you're changing all the time. It's not, the other one might only change once a year, maybe not three to four years. And then you got someone that's announcements every week.
So you would, you want even a section that people in the community can sign up and, and update.
And then, and then of course, there's the, you know, you love all the stuff that the other sites have where they, you know, you click on it, you see the picture of the town hall and you get directions to it and other things. But, but I think what you want to do is start off with something and then you can expand and build on it. And the basic needs, I think I've covered there. There might be other things that I'm not thinking of that are basic needs that these people in the office here every day, that somebody comes in and asks for, that we could have on a site.
So then my next, my next question would be, there, there's, are you just looking for one person's proposal? Or are you putting out a request for proposals for a bunch of different companies to, to bid on that? Um, cause I could, one, put together something where I could build something and quote an hourly rate. Or I could, two, work with the select board to be a consultant to choose a, a vendor. I um, I closed my internet development business in two thousand and five, but I still teach this at the Community College of Vermont, so I'm capable of building this, but I'm not insured like I once was.
Ask it in a different way then. If you teach this at the, is there any students that would be interested in doing this like a summer job?
The thing is, the students are not, the thing is, you still always need an overarching person responsible, otherwise you lose control. So we have to have, you need to own a domain name and you need to rent some space somewhere to host the site. And then somebody needs to be in charge of um, making sure content gets developed and put in the right place.
Now, cur- currently, we're with Comcast, I think, here. Uh, so that, that's, that's who we do the business with today.
And they can, they also provide hosting with your account.
And I don't see us changing Comcast anytime soon.
Doesn't matter, you can still, everything is movable.
So, but basically, that's who we have today.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, the big question, I guess, I'd have to ask is what, not, not saying what you would do it for. But can you give us a range of what things like this normally costs from low end to high end?
Um, I, I haven't been involved in the business enough to actually know that answer, low end to high end. Um, I, I am sure from what I've seen in the past, you could easily spend a hundred thousand dollars on something like this, but it'd be ridiculous.
Yeah, but it's, yeah, we don't need that.
It's a, it's a kind of a crazy little business. There's not really any kind of standardization as to what you get.
Well, why don't, why don't you do this then? Why don't you um, mull it over, think it over?
Yeah.
Uh, you've got some ideas from us. Um, I think you have a pretty good idea of what you're doing and how much time it would take. Would you put together a proposal and uh, and put it before the board of selectmen and um.
Based on what?
Well, yeah, yeah, I think that's good. What there's, what I keep coming back to is because of the rules and regulations of the state, we might have to go out. On this based on what the dollar amount would be. That's why I was trying to get a feel of the dollar amount. What might be a better thing to ask. It, if you spend X amount of dollars on something, there's a, there's a bid requirement that you must go out to bid, okay? And this might cost you that much. If it does, uh.
I don't think I'm gonna charge you the amount that it would cost, make you go out to bid, but.
Okay, and I, and I, and I'm glad to hear that. But if that was the case, what we'd be asking for is the proposal would really be an R F P. Which we would then send out to everywhere. If we were asking you to write an R F P, then we would be negotiating what that means to have someone write.
That is my question, is should I be working with you to help develop an R F P? Or should I be working on you to develop a proposal as to how I think.
So you could sell us an idea and see if we would uh, buy into it. And that's the, that's the big question. And uh, when I just heard, uh, I'm okay with you working on a proposal as long as the cost was within our ballpark, so we could say yea or nay. Uh, the, I just don't want to put you in a spot that if it came in where we have to go to bid, that's why I want, I brought up what I brought up.
I appreciate that.
Doing a whole bunch of work and then having to say, sorry, we gotta go to bid.
I'm, I'm gonna speak on it, but I can't help myself, you know?
Go ahead.
Well, um, I mean, I might as well say it the way I feel. No, I, no, I don't have it with paid, but I got, um, I guess what I'm really gonna say is. Cost is a very important uh, issue uh, for the town panel, uh, on every aspect that we touch. And I, I, I just don't wanna uh, uh, build someone up. I don't want to sit here and just think that uh, that um, I would approve any. Large amount of expenditure for that, okay? Now, with that said, uh, how much do we spend now?
On the website?
Yeah.
We don't.
Okay.
Nothing. You can't get any cheaper than that.
That, that's why, that's why I am.
You just caught Ronnie's ear.
Well, then you have Comcast hosting is good to know.
Is this, we're starting from zero.
Yep.
That is, okay, and, and that's not bad. That is good, because uh, what that does. This board needs to say, uh, needs to, we need to at some point discuss what we believe the value should be. Or if we want to spend any money at all.
Qualified to put a value on it.
Well, well, we, we're, if we, if we have it, we're gonna have to pay for it. The, the value is the need.
Well, I, I need to know.
That's true, that, well, and that's what Amy's gonna provide.
The value is the need. We know we've got people out that's writing letters, that have stood up at our meetings. And have asked us forever to have some sort of webpage up and we have not moved one iota in that direction.
I'm not seeing that.
I shouldn't say we haven't, because we have tried three or four times and the starts have never completed. And if you really want to do it, you gotta do what Henry just said. How much are we willing to commit? And will we put the effort necessary?
I mean, we, we need, I don't know if we want to say it, but I think we really need to, to um, you know, run that through our minds, that's all.
Think it'll take you a tremendous amount of time to figure out about.
No.
No, I, I, you need a, you need a pretty basic content management system and my, my vision from what I'm hearing and what I know how panel works is. I need to try to make sure other people do as much of the work as possible.
Right.
And, you know, I would charge a rate that's equivalent to what I'm making as a teacher at C C V. Um, you know, I used to charge a lot more than that a decade ago, but uh, you know, I think that's a- appropriate for where I am. I think I'm clear.
Cause you know, we can always adjust the fee on that.
You could do that, but that is separate business.
As separate from her. Good try though. Good try.
Right, you know, I, I think a decade ago was in a, in a different place too.
We're not under any obligation monetarily to you at this point, correct Amy?
Absolutely.
I, I understand.
I'll look into this in the.
Okay, we're, we're starting to, to repeat ourselves with the money.
And I am.
Really what we would like to see is put together a proposal, bring it back to us, tell us how you see this working and what you estimate it would be.
Excellent.
Thank you.
We most certainly appreciate it.
Very much so.
I will appreciate it too.
Okay, there you go.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Take care.
Okay, uh.
Time for practice, sorry.
Other, other, other things on the agenda, uh, letter to the state. This is to do with the Route seven repaving that was gonna go on. A while ago, the board had suggested that a letter be sent upstate to the Department of Transportation. Uh, informing them that when they look at re-blacktopping this road or, or putting an overlay on it, that they take into consideration. Uh, somehow providing a bike path or walk path that is wider, wider, wider than what it is today.
Right, yeah, right, right.
Okay, so, so uh, and uh, if anybody knows, the Department of Transportation knows how many accidents have occurred on this road and there's been numerous over the years. Uh, through the section that we're concerned with and we should, to be clear, what we're concerned with is not where the shoulders are wide today, but from the school to the Bennington line. Okay, and, and I think we can make that clear in the letter, that this is our concern and here's what we're looking for.
I, I, I don't think you have to, gonna, gonna have to spell that out. I think that um, the state knows exactly what we're asking for.
But I think we're better off to spell, spell it out as clearly as possible, because one thing for sure, when you're working with government. Agencies, the clearer you make what you want, the better off you are. It's just the way it works. Anybody that works for the Department of Transportation, else we'll, there's six of them, they'll have six different ideas. Which we're looking for is clearly a safe path for people.
That's correct.
Okay, uh.
My point was, was that's why we're asking, because it's unsafe.
That's right, very much so.
Okay, yeah, I mean, you all agree with that, I believe.
Oh, God. You had to know, so, I know people that's been hit, accidents.
Very dangerous, be sure.
Okay, and uh, without any o- other thing in front of me, I'll make one more statement. May sixth, which is Tuesday next, from seven A M. to seven P M., the polls will be open to vote and I hope that uh, you all go out and vote. Your voice, that's where your voice gets heard, at the polls. With that, I'll take a motion.
Make a motion to adjourn.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
We're out of here.